Look on the left side of the page, you start twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And what you're looking at is uh the number of cell meters and how much we get charged on a monthly basis for reading those. The number of, well, I was told tax meters, I guess that's what that's a credit burden. Um and the monthly cost for to read those for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-five. So, and then if you look on the right-hand side, the city each year pays for twelve hundred dollars for a mobile license agreement. Along with three hundred dollars which just went up to three sixty this year for the overall volume license. Um so basically on the right-hand side, uh without diving into it too much, what's it, what it's taking in is, so let's look at for twenty-three, the total cost that the city is paying to read the meters per month plus all the licensing fees is three thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Per month. No, that's for the year for me. So if we move down and go to twenty-four, you'll see that we would out to four thousand eighty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um of course, we don't have totals for twenty-five yet. So basically, if you look at where that total revenue is just below that, um that is, it's what we're looking at charging a technology fee, or I'm not sure what the coverage would be called on the bill yet, but just to start covering these costs. So it would be at a rate of, we could do twenty-five cents, thirty-five cents, fifty cents. I don't know that we need fifty cents. Um you know, we'd be making double what we're taking in, or what we're paying out of that housing. So you know, like that thirty-five cents per month right now, pay, we paid out four thousand, we've taken seven thousand. Once again, you have to remember this is going into the water fund, which is an enterprise fund, which works more like a business. The water fund, we're trying to put money in there, pump it in for our water treatment thing, you know, things coming down the line. You kind of have to remember that it's enterprise.
So to boil this down, from the, we get charged per month for every cellular read and every radio. Cellular and modern radio. We need to recoup that money. Um I believe the town I live in, and I won't say the town, but if you guys don't know where I live, they have like a, a technology fee, they call it. Um we need to put some kind of fee in our fee schedule to recoup these costs. But right now, I mean, we're just rolling the cost out of the budget.
We're paying, yeah, the city's paying.
Right, yeah. Um this week something that would, it would have to come to council for approval. And then it would change the fee schedule, right? It would have to go on the fee schedule, it would be part of the fee schedule. Just wanna know your guys' thoughts on this, and like, you wanna bring something to council?
So we're talking about a total fee of three to six dollars per year.
Eight or less, yeah.
Correct.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not minimizing that from the city's side. I'm saying it's not, it's not a huge, it's not like our water rate increases.
No, no.
But this is a fund that should be self-sufficient.
I agree, yes. No, that's, that's what I'm getting at, man, is that it should be getting, it should be getting paid for by the residents.
What do you have perspective for the residents?
Correct.
I mean, it is anyways by taxes, but.
No, I'm not saying that this fee is gonna go up every once in a while, they're not by cents probably. I mean, we're gonna recoup, we'll probably look at it once a year and see, okay, we don't cover cents, and we need to jump that fee up, right?
But there's also a service to the fee. So there's a service through the company that we use called Ion Water. And whether you have a cellular meter or you have a classic meter, you still have access to that Ion Water app. What you see on here is not as much if you have a gold meter versus a new meter. But it's not just that this is being thrown on there. There is a service attached to that fee, and you can kind of watch your water, engage your water, and if there's a leak, like, it'll give you some of that information. Some residents get more information based on their meter. But there is a service attached to this fee, it's not just nothing.
So this is per meter, it's all get two years of the.
It's per resident, it's just per cost.
Yeah, I mean, we really should be recouping some of these costs.
Which we all know.
So would you guys lean toward the twenty-five cents?
I ran a beat through the, yeah.
The sweet spot's here.
Yep, yep. Do it.
I mean, yeah, I, well, if you cut the twenty-five cents, it's still gonna be cutting the charge, right? If we did the twenty-five cents per month, that's still cutting the charge.
Oh, yeah, this isn't grand over what you're spending.
And there are times, a lot of times, where we go out at no cost, and I think we, certainly don't mean me. Um going out and we shut off water because there are snowbirds, or they have plumbing going out, like, some of this, right, there are other things that staff do, that kind of feed into that. Um calling the meter company to talk to them about, if you're high, well. But just, you know, I mean, so it's like, even though the twenty-five is kind of like, eh, the fifty feels like it covers some of those fees as well, that, that you kind of play into that.
So, cover top with a fifty cent. What kind, what would you want like to call it?
Uh I would say technology, yeah. I see it on my other bill, why wouldn't I wanna see it on my own? I mean, it's, it's hard out, yeah, you know, I mean, anybody who wanted their cable bill or their cellphone bill, and like, you get into that one month worth of fees, way more than what you're paying a year for a loss.
Well, if you notice XL isn't counting slapping off your house electric meters, and all, they're all smart meters. So we're all gonna get it.
How would you recommend it, Tony?
I was thinking thirty-five, but, I was thinking fifty.
I could bring both the options to council, I mean, if you guys could decide it there.
Well, I, I just gave these, I mean, we could do something in between there, I just gave these options. I mean, we gotta make more money quicker than, you know, with this. I'm just gonna pick both fifty. Get a dumb start it, and then if we have to look at it in year and add five cents.
If you start at fifty cents, you might not have to raise it any time soon, but you will have to raise it if you have.
I mean, yeah, we, we could run that fifty bucks for two, three years, it'd be fine.
Good.
Okay, he's five, he's seven.
Well, I'd come in with a fifty cent.
And you can see, even in the, like, we've only been, I mean, the fees that we're getting charged have probably gone up. It was eighty-nine cents and five cents in twenty-three, up to ninety-one and six, and still ninety-one and six.
Yeah, it doesn't climb very.
Doesn't climb, and the access fees, you know, haven't, it just finally took a sixty dollar dump of a volume license. It's been paying for three years.
To me, it's more surprising that we don't already charge this.
That's why our, yeah.
People said, why, how are you, yeah.
Okay, I'm in for a fifty cents.
Would you implement, I think we would publish that until January first, we have to change the fee schedule.
Well, can't you just do it?
We're gonna do that, we're gonna do that. I know that we can, I just, we have a lot of things that we're talking about. Anything else you wanna change, and when they get that, we'll continue it.
Yes, and the order to change is we have to publish it, and there's the whole thing. And that's where I'm coming from, if we're talking about like the rental lease thing, or we're talking, like, I think all of that should kind of be done at once, and if that's, if that's October, if we did it locked up by then, great, but the sooner the better. But I think it should be all of those things at once, so it's not like, oh, change again, I mean, that feels probably not super clean to residents either, like, that's a lot of changes.
I usually try to keep the fee schedule like this, like, one per year, um maybe, you know.
Well, I think hooking up to, and though, you guys are gonna need to jump that up twice a year eventually, because they're gonna have meetings all the time, I guarantee it. Rate meetings, you're gonna have rate meetings with the commission, probably once, twice, or four times a year. Right, well, whatever, because there's a second part of this that we haven't hit up yet, we can't tell you. So the other part of this, right, is, we would like to put a penalty fee or some kind of fee on when someone buys a second lawn meter. The problem we're having is people are coming to buy it. And they, they do have to pay for the meter in its entirety, so the city's not losing money. And there's a permit fee, right? Like, that's the whole permit.
We don't charge them that much.
So you don't charge, you just charge them for the meter.
Twenty-five dollar inspection fee.
Yeah, they expect.
Okay, there's an inspection fee for us to go, uh, public works, they can hire whoever they want to put that in, the homeowner can put it themselves, right? We go and make sure that it's installed correctly and only to outside spigots or irrigation or hole. Problem is, if people are buying them, and then sit in their basement for like, they say, oh, we just had them installed, we have, it's been a year, two years. How do you know that they haven't installed them? And they're lying, or they truly are laying on the floor in the basement. We can't have a council out there that we don't know what's going on with it anymore, like, we need to fuck this up. So what I wanna do is put like a minimum of a hundred dollar fee when they buy their second meter to, that we hold until we do the inspection. Give them incentive to get it in and get it done.
Like a deposit?
Like a deposit.
Well, now, the thing is though, man, if, if you're saying that people, putting them in and not giving them inspections, a hundred dollars is nothing.
Right.
I would say, I would, I would.
I mean, it's happened, I've, I've seen it once or twice, but we've seen a lot of people are just not putting them in.
Why do they dump them then?
I don't know, you tell me.
So I would say it could be actually more.
We recently bought one that, that somebody had for over a year.
Well, here's another thing that happens, somebody buys one, they plan on putting it in, they get fifty, then they sell the house. And they take, somebody here with them, like, I don't get it, like, so you know.
I give them ninety days. It's all ninety days, you just buy a new one.
Not ninety, I mean, why not thirty?
Well, it's thirty days.
It's all within thirty days, and then your hundred dollar cash deposit.
Then that would, you know, kind of force them to be organized enough to be ready to do it by the time they come to buy.
Yeah, so don't buy the meter until you're ready.
Right, that's what, you know, like, right.
And that's for that thirty days, if they haven't done it, then the next month, we start charging them, paying fifty dollars, no access fee, you're not giving us access to your meter.
So, I mean, it's.
We, this is not a, I mean, it's not, no people have a ton of.
Not a new problem, but it's, it's, it's gonna solve the little issue we have with it right now.
I would take them back after this is gone though.
But the account's still out there, like, in our system, it's still out there.
You can close, I mean, you can close the account.
Comes out as like an unread meter, or like, yeah, like, something's wrong.
You close the account, but what I'm saying is physically do not take the meter back and give it back to your money. But that does not address your problem if they open it up.
Right, I have only, in the few years, we've been selling for like ten, right? Um I've only rented two houses where I ran it inspected, like, totally hooked, hooked them up the wrong way. I've also rented houses where they hooked them up and didn't put the head or the radio on it. So, and then we're finding ones where there's, oh, why didn't even know it existed? I think it's downstairs in the bay, but I don't know, like, but we just literally have to get in there to inspect it, because sorry, I don't think the homeowner's worked for it, I really don't. My job is to make sure those meters are working and installed properly. So I would like some kind of a fee to make them scramble to get it put in after they've hooked it in. And get us in there to inspect it faster.
I like where you're going though, so.
So you, I'll, I'll go back with this, reverse back to technology, do you wanna wait till January on this?
I think that's.
That's kinda what I'm hearing from the staff, because we can't wait till January and do one for, yeah.
Or if we, or if things come to an end.
Or if we, yeah, if we get, you know, some of the other ordinance stuff there, we could go, we're on about home enforcement, if we're gonna terminate it, or original spectrum, if we're gonna do anything like that, all, all the, if they try and or wait till January, and then we can do what we have at that point.
Now, what if it's going to December, and then be approved, so January person kicks in?
Um we do some stuff in December, some of the stuff has to sort of like pre-approve of like the moderate increases and back and forth. Um most of their stuff, we just make a change on the fee schedule itself, and then have that be continued.
I get it, I don't know if we're gonna have to, you wanna skip right to it?
No.
Now that we, well.
The other, the.
Spencer's texting me, wants to know if he needs to be on the phone for the last item, that's all.
So, takeaways from this?
Is revisit them in November, December, and come in January.
Re-revisit it right before we do the.
Or if we get going, some of the other ones that work.
Yeah.
So we're, we're okay with the fifty cents?
Yep.
And then, I think it's going for the, for home enforcement, uh, home rental, like, you said, and then, without the inspection dollars.
Yeah, it would be like a deposit for inspection, deposit for inspection.
Can you, you know what other cities do as far as that goes?
I don't, I really don't.
Can you look into that?
I can, I'm not allowed to sell, sell a lot of these. So, I'll try.
Recuent planning, next steps discussion.
Um so we had a staff last week, um they already get copies of this, you can plan the file, the report, and um the PowerPoint that they'll put together. So that is for you guys to take home, really read through, look at stuff. We're gonna set up a meeting for May, and we're gonna kind of go through and take apart the top priority goals, um so that staff has a clear direction on where to go, so that we can start taking away at some of this stuff, getting, getting some check boxes. And some of this stuff is gonna take a while, not that it's gonna happen overnight, but we want some direction so that we can start doing our stuff um as we have.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to find ownership on.
Yeah, and yeah, kind of assign some tasks and duties to people, you know, staff is excited about this, and we're, we wanna get going, but we kind of, our direction list right now, you know, it's like, you can see the goals on the, on the wall, and they're all great, but like, where do we start, what do we do? Who does what?
Yeah, I think with our last conversation on this, kind of waiting for this, we got this, so let's.
And then, so in May, we're gonna have this meeting, we're gonna talk about all this, and then in June, we'll bring it back to control to adopt and approve, um so that we can move forward with, like, officially be having this, you know, as goals.
And we have that date.
We want to set a date now?
Yes.
Um yeah, I don't quite do the workshop type thing. We're going to have a deep dive in the top priority goals and assigned tasks, and especially with some of these short-term goals, get things going. I know that May is kind of crappy month um for our staff. Uh we, Jackie and Christie will be out the whole first week at um Quirk Institute. Um and then we have sort of like the twelve to the sixteen, that's a couple weeks, but that is a week that is probably gonna work. And then I will be out nineteen, twenty-third, and Christie will be out part of all of that week as well. Um and the I I R T cover. And Memorial we get into, so I remember last week it ended, in twelve with Calcal. Yep, twelve with Calcal. Do you have that standing in the middle one? I have, I need to, I have a forty, if we have anything, I, I don't have a lot of things going right there, unless you're starting new development stuff. Um or the changes that the, the twenty-two. I haven't gotten those yet, so I.
Yes, I can always, if there's P S R thirty-six.
You thought through Memorial, then? That's a respect.
I want to do a fifteen.
What do you mean, you mean, uh? Sorry?
You're bringing, you're bringing it on.
Got it.
Ah, just kidding, good, continue to have that seven bucks.
Are we doing a four attack or?
Four bucks.
Good. XL Energy Streetlight Agreement discussion.
All right, uh, in front of you, you got a memo from Bullman Mink, but really the part one is the one from XL in the back, you kind of just breaks it down, so.
So.
Yeah, um XL, right now XL Energy owns the main case, entire street lighting system in our, in our city, right? We, we signed a, the way I think it's been working is, as the development goes in, the developer pays, XL upfront, put the streetlights in, and then the city, the city signed up on a twenty-five year plan. They wanna know what we wanna do, because now we have streetlights and they're expiring from that plan. Um and there's quite a few, there's an XL sheet, if you guys want an email to you.
So there's approximately one hundred and sixty-six decorative streetlights that have expired, ranging from twenty-twenty-six to twenty-forty-seven. Of those, one hundred and forty-two of them, eighty-six percent are, are definitely expired by twenty-thirty-two. Um. One hundred and sixty-six, right? The decorative streetlights, um so there are a few options. Um and then there are some like pool and light style options, but depending on which option you go with, some of these are limited. Um I don't know if we wanna get pressure on the phone, or you guys.
So you see the options here, do nothing, now, I also remind you, this is how it works right now, it's, streetlight goes out, it gets reported in public works, or one staff up here, so he'll take the complaint. There's an online reporting system to XL, they come out and do the repair. Now, in the right way, absolutely not. Um there's quite a turn around there, but uh, we do not have.
It's how you show, is that right?
Uh so you can see the different options that are in here. Spencer kind of built into this a little harder, um I guess if you have any questions, I could try to answer them.
Or we can just go home.
Or we can get Spencer on the phone.
He's kind of standing by, he needs him, he was gonna come through with the letter, um he had written it on the letter, so.
So, so what it is, is we're actually on the prepaid option on every street light right now, I think it's, yeah.
So we're on number three?
Yeah, so we, we can do nothing, and um we can either pay our prepaid rate, however.
One point one nine dollars.
Um, non. If we do nothing, we still pay XL like a, a, an amount per month for a streetlight, and then only routine maintenance would happen, and they would not perform anything else, like if the streetlights were out, or if they, you know, the pole needs to be replaced, anything like that, we would have to pay for it. Um if a streetlight was beyond repairing that case, XL with no side of city, then the city wants the light replaced or removed, um we would have to pay for the cost, or they will remove it at no cost, but then they would not replace it. Do you know how many there are per year coming up?
Yeah, there's an XL square street broke down.
And we can send that out to you guys, it's, it's just a lot, um it's a lot, it's, every streetlight was developed by address.
Roughly address, yeah. So it starts on First Street, North, you know, four nineteen, four twenty-three, goes on to Crystal, maybe Park Place, Third Street. It picks over USI with twelve Zephyr.
If we stay with the prepaid payment option, and we want to renew those contracts, that's about one point, um one three, three million, and that's just for the hundred and forty-two.
So that's them taking them out though, and replacing it?
Yeah, it's like new, new wiring conduit.
Anyways.
And new pole, and the pole would be, I believe, a part of us. So if we, they, they limit us with that. Based on our options, or what type of pole, and what type of lights we can have, so. So it breaks down, it breaks down the prepaid option, but it doesn't really break it on the standard. Like, I'm, I'm looking for like, what's the standard, what would it cost, and then, so, with the standard replacement, so they would, that would include the eighteen-foot direct buried fiber glass and the traditional fixture. The cost would be twenty-six dollars per light per month, and that includes the electricity, the maintenance, replacements, and everything. But it's twenty-six light, twenty-six dollars per light per month.
I don't know the contract.
I don't think it's a contract, it is, um it's, the cost includes that for as long as the city has the streetlight at the, we wanna make it change. That's just, that would just be us got lining up for like standard service itself.
You're basically just paying a monthly fee.
So we put a terrible like that, so the twenty-six dollars per month takes a hundred and forty-two light, so it's like thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-seven hundred dollars per month, per month. For how long? I think until we remove the light, or.
It's gonna be twenty-five years.
For infinity, I mean, yeah. And then otherwise, we can, we can take over and transfer to a monthly electricity user, and we would have to get like a.
Certified electrician, and then we, because right now, they're not metered, so you have to, you would have to pick a location to put a meter in. We have to pay for that meter box install, have to pay for the meter to be installed, and then we're gonna be charged two rates of electricity on, or, I mean, two rates of street lighting, but yeah. And the city would be responsible for all repairs. We do not have a boot truck or a certified electrician on staff, so we retire itself all the way, all the way.
So no matter which way you go though, XL owns everything there, prepaid or.
We could, we could do nothing, once we, we would take it over. If you do nothing, we inherit the light.
One, we would still pay it still just for the electricity, so we would own the light, we would have to maintain the light, we would have to replace the light, we would have to do everything with the light.
Well, I was looking at the prepaid and standard service.
Yeah, yeah.
Standard thing off the like, forty cents per month, I'll put it one point, let's say over the twenty-five.
All right, so at, okay, this depends on, oh, so roughly forty-four, three a year. And twenty-five meters is one point one oh seven.
Or something like that, yeah.
Well, the other one is only three dollars.
One point one three six, so, I mean, yeah, we're, thirty thousand dollars.
Says to replace a hundred and forty-two lights.
Because that's when.
That's what.
But they all expire a lot, right, but it would still maintain lights for twenty-five years. After that, yeah. And so they would, with the prepaid, they would replace them as they expire, not beforehand, so if the light doesn't expire until twenty thirty-two, they would replace it.
Right, and at that, uh, at that time, my understanding, a little bit, we talked with XL, with folks with our engineers in here, is you can actually decide if you want the light to go back in the same spot, because everyone is all new wires, so your locations can change. And, um, yeah. Problem is, I have, and I can tell you, uh, the only points I get from people is the streetlights that are acorns that are in the front yard. They like to see more ones that go over the street, that don't go out at three sixty.
Probably the acorn ones too, the class, little tops, I know, some of them have been glued down because the little top will come off.
Well, that.
The yard of the filled water.
Those places, the areas of town where they spray paint the back with black, just so that it's down in the yard, and like, and you put them in there, and they spray paint it.
Is that, not the middle one or the other?
I don't know what.
They were kind of wanting this direction, because if we wanna look into like, taking them over and, and hiring electricians, that would, that would.
I don't think that's, I don't think that.
No, that would involve more research, or like, no, I would have to handle.
We kind of put a pause, Spencer's digging this, this far, we wanted to make a deal with the council, it was leading toward. Prepay option, right?
Well, I would agree with that.
If we need to pay for the total project cost upfront with lower monthly rates, XL installs, owns and maintains the streetlight for another twenty-five years. Uh after twenty-five years, XL performs with only routine maintenance on the streetlight.
And it's hoping this whole situation. A whole year on, that's okay.
Decorative fixtures and base monopoles must be installed under this rate.
Is there only one copy of that?
So, I have, it's, no.
I could get all of them, yeah.
It's, it's, no, I just print it out, so it's printed on one page, but.
I'm just gonna pull it on the.
On the server, under public works. So what Bullman Mink was doing is they were starting to dig into this really deep, and like, you set up times, and I just said, stop, let's get a feeling of what the council leads toward here.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't want them to keep looking into more options and more things, um.
I think the prepaid option is the way to go.
Oh, oh, oh.
So we have the prepaid and the expire, basically.
Yeah.
So we're not paying them one point, one round of the game.
We're not paying or going to one of nine years.
And that strategy shows how many per year.
One, two.
It, it shows exactly when they expire.
So they would be replaced all year they expire, within a month, okay, that'll work.
And we don't have any. And we don't have any, so times when you stop it, yes, the first one expires next year.
Twenty-six of them expire next year, now we'll, I'll say that down, we know XL, they probably, they can get to them right away.
Well, it's a big project, and they're gonna make money on this, right?
I think, but if they have ten or nineteen of them, they'd think it's good right on.
So as they expire, that's, like I said, it also gives you the opportunity to change the pole design, the light, and the location, if you'd like to.
How much do you say expires next year?
Twenty-six according to XL.
In twenty twenty-six, it's closing.
Yeah.
Here.
Uh, in twenty-eight, there's gonna be a, huh, twenty-eight, yes. Twenty-seven, small.
Try to get for it a little bit more.
Twenty-seven, small, twenty-eight, there's a lot, a lot.
Well, because there's about twenty-one and twenty-two.
Think about it, twenty twenty, or two thousand and thirty, twenty combo, and you know, it's those years where you're.
Oh, yeah, twenty twenty-eight would be my favorite.
So what is this?
And Jack will be able to, with the scratching, I see, that's what I need, yeah.
So what's the approximate monthly cost?
On the twelve? Um, I think it's.
Really, I mean, what does that mean?
Well, if the six dollars a light, there's eight thousand a light.
Right.
But six dollars per light, precise, six dollars.
That's the, that's the fee for.
So we're paying, we're paying six dollars on one sixty-six.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna be two hundred and eight thousand next year, to get twenty-six lights replaced, and then after that, we pay six dollars a light, I think that's after.
After the installation.
The monthly cost, after the installation, six dollars per light. Oh, no, but that costs monthly cost for this option. I think I need to clarify.
Yeah.
That means.
Need to clarify that.
That's right, I mean, is it eight thousand over twenty-five years, is it, like eight thousand, yeah, I don't like the replacement estimated to be eight thousand per light.
Well, it's esti- no, I'm here and tried, hey, so I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm here and tried, and the problem with its estimation, is because if you change your streetlight, your pole, the price of metal, price of.
All the options.
You could, the wire in the ground.
I get that, but I would just want a clarity on, the, it says the replacement cost is estimated eight thousand if it's fine, but then it says, the approximate monthly cost for this option is six dollars per light, so are we paying eight thousand upfront next year, or are we paying six dollars per light for so many years? That's what I want, the difference.
Well, I think it's eight thousand, they have it installed, and then the six dollars a month.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, we can think, but I want.
I want, sure.
Well, this is easy, we can call stuff.
Well, um, is he gonna know it though? This prepaid, you might not, the prepaid option rate, it's in the memo from XL, that your community pays for the project cost upfront with a lower monthly rate per, to kind of, after installing. We've got per and six dollars for estimate after that.
Let's do this, I think we're all kind of agreed on the prepaid option.
Because once we have a direction, we can get more information from XL directly, because I don't know that.
That's what, that's what I think, yeah, no, I agree, we should, we're all kind of agreed on the prepaid option. Let's get some, let's get some clarification on what this monthly cost is, six dollars per light, and then.
I think, I honestly did think you dug into this a little bit. You tell them, I might have an answer for you. Hey, how's it going? Yeah, so the only question, what's really going on right now is under replacement prepaid option, the replacement, uh, the letter C, the approximate monthly cost. No, not right now, but if you wanna be.
I can still hear you, Spencer, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. There, the question is letter C, the approximate monthly cost for this option is six dollars a light, is that the electric cost per light per month? Under.
See, it's the same thing as four C, says the cost of people, because we made a replacement streetlight.
Yeah.
Probably the major, probably the major.
Probably the same thing, I think twenty-six is about six.
I hear your mouth.
That's why you pay a lot.
Because you're.
I mean, you're.
You're probably right.
But I wanted to.
I think it's kind of be paid by paying upfront, because there are always aspects, not like to be on a unit plan at the same, like the cylinders, all the payment thing, like the more you spend, you want to get.
Okay, includes electric usage for that light. You guys have any other questions? Includes electric usage for that light, for six dollars. Alright, I think that's it, Spencer, unless there's any other questions now?
Nope.
Anybody? Alright, thanks.
Thanks, brother.
Bye.
Okay, so yeah, I think that's it.
And obviously, that's what the city's doing right now, I mean, if you look at the spreadsheet, we're on the prepaid option the whole time, just the only difference is, we didn't pay for the upfront costs of the light, you're developing it.
Well, yeah, I think there's, we're not paying one point one upfront.
No.
We have the spreadsheet, so we can kind of budget going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that's great.
And I'll, you know, cause I think Bullman Make, or we're gonna need to figure this out, so, you'll be seeing something coming through the council to approve, moving car using the XL prepaid plan, or if, from being at Bullman Make. Alright? Alright?
Alright, any other discussion on that?
Okay.
Well, I do have a question, so if we go into prepaid, are you guys gonna want to decide the lights, or you just wanna keep them where they're at, replace them, or what was there?
No, we're gonna change it up.
Or do you want to reevaluate the ones every year, and bring it to council, say, okay, this is the area, these are the ones that are getting replaced?
You're gonna, you're gonna change them, and they grow on, it'll be all the same.
You're gonna stay consistent, and I don't think you're gonna want everything to be.
Yeah, all of a sudden, you got one style over here, and then five.
Well, that's what you got right now, really tight.
Well, but now we're at the point where they can make a decision if they wanna be consistent for the next nine years if they get replaced.
I really don't see the same.
Uh, the prepaid option, I think it opens up some other options.
It opens up more doors, yes, uh, the prepaid option gives you every style on the street, other options don't.
Except for, except for the wood, so it gives you the decorative poles, if somebody wants wood and all, and then, and then, um, several of the light fixtures.
Yeah.
Yeah, and take some back up again.
We can get twenty four on the wood.
So.
I could be able to stuff from nothing, but. I don't think we need to have that.
Huh?
That's what I, I already said, the train, the old one, like, uh. Five block, we have, it's a re-lighting conversation.
Oh, putting up new lights there?
That's not, yeah, that's.
Well, I, I'm gonna have a hard time, I'm assuming, just to go up and fix the ones that are out, cause it requires a train truck, like, a large train truck. Um, so we'll probably revisit those beforehand, and tell you the area of town that they're getting replaced, and what you would like, cause once you decide, first one, I'm assuming you're gonna stick with that one all the way through.
Yeah, and we'll probably have to see costs, so.
Right.
Style.
When that comes down the line, but again, I know, I was on the phone with XL, they can't really tell you, they give you cost and poll, but the wiring and all that, they ain't gonna be able to tell you upfront like that.
Well, I think, and. Prepaid option, kind of lots of things, so like, certainly the amount, and you, besides maybe area, it's based on the style.
Yeah, it's probably like you get to choose from the, based on your, you know, if you're buying a house, you can choose the, yeah.
Well, the only thing you can't do again is the wood, so.
Okay, can we go to discussion there?
Not, not now, but, so we will, just test it again.
You got a newer direction?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so that's that.
Multiple again?
Sorry.
Favorite?
Hi.
We are again.
Five thirty.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
Um, in the backyard.
Yeah.